Good afternoon. Calling this meeting to order, the NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There are no public comments on closed session items.
Thank you. Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening. My name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Isidra Menkos. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Si, buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos a la Mesa de Educación del Distrito Escolar Unificado del Valle de Napa. Para iniciar la interpretación en español, en un momento van a ver en la parte baja de sus computadoras el símbolo de un mundo terráneo que dice Language Interpretation, o Interpretación de Idioma. Ponga su cursor ahí y haga clic en Spanish, o español, y después haga clic en Done, o Listo. En una tableta o celular busquen tres puntitos desde la aplicación Zoom, y bajo Language Interpretation, o Interpretación de Idioma, haga clic ahí y presione Done, o Listo. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. Oh, wait, I'm so sorry. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vedder Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Present.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Martin?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Student Board Member Grayden?
Present.
Board members present. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, we're starting on our agenda with E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Gonzalez-Mares, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
Yes, I do. So, Report on Closed Session Items. This is in regards to Item D1, Student Discipline with Respect to Every Item of Business to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 4891220, Government Code Section 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act. This is in regards to expulsion. Number of cases, one. The board recommends expulsion of student 03132025A.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we are to E2, Flag Salute, and I would like to ask if Grace Hart, the daughter of Trustee Hart, can please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much. Great job, Grace. Okay, Announcement, E3. This meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. E4, Approval of Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from Trustee Hart, a second from Trustee Chu, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And E5, Approval of Minutes. We have February 13, 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Martin. All in, uh, do I, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And abstention?
Abstain.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we have the minutes for the February 20, 2025, meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by Trustee Hart, second from Trustee Chu, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And now, E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
We do. We have tonight Jackie Clayton, the President of CSCA. Are you in the room, Jackie? Okay. I do know that Travis Hawes, the E-Board Member at Large for CSCA, is online this evening. Travis, is there anything you'd like to say tonight?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Travis. Thank you for being present this evening on behalf of CSCA. I know tonight we have Thwani Satin, the President of NAPS, here, I believe, in the boardroom. Hi, would you like to come up and address the board? You're good? Okay, great. Thanks, Thwani. Thank you for being present tonight and representing NAPS. And this evening, we also have from NVEA, President Deb St. Clair and Chief Negotiator, Troy Giddings. Deb, would you like to address the board?
I always forget the microphone part. Good evening, President Reiser, Board Trustees, Student Trustee Riley, good evening, Dr. Masetti, Executive Cabinet. Just wanted to make a quick statement, real quick, about a later agenda item. All know, we know that there are legitimate reasons to have RIFs. As President of NVEA, I hope the board understands and takes into consideration the impact these decisions have on the people in this organization and their lives. It is also the responsibility of NVEA to ensure all contractual processes are followed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. St. Clair. That brings us to F, Recognition of Students of the Month, and we're going to start with Valley Oak High School. Will Brian Marcus please present the Students of the Month?
Good evening, Dr. Masetti, Board of Trustees, Trustee Martin, welcome aboard. Good to see you again. It is my pleasure to be here. It's been a, it's been a wild ride for the last week. We've had a WASC visit at Valley Oak that was very successful. Thank you for being there, Ms. Water. And then, this morning, at Rotary, I had the privilege of introducing our student of the month who happens to be here. Sorry, E, can you stand up just real quick? I know it's not your moment, but it is for a second. So, our, our first Student of the Month for, I believe, January is Esmeralda Leon Cortez. I'm just going to read a few things that her teacher said about her. This is from Ms. Markle, who is our ELD teacher at Valley Oak High School. "Esmeralda created the poster for our 2023-24 anti-gambling campaign in partnership with Booth and Friday Night Live. Is featured on our Napa Valley TV PSA in English and Spanish. Her digital media teacher says she is a class leader and a helper and an amazing digital artist. Mr. Federico, who is a history teacher, said Esme is extremely kind and thoughtful student. While she is usually on task and making sure she gets her work completed, she is also always willing to pause and help out fellow students who may be struggling." Vero Gomez, who is one of our instructional assistants for our ELD program, "Esme demonstrates a combination of academic excellence and positive behavior. I enjoy having her in class. She is respectful, responsible, kind, and empathetic." And from Veronica Guerrero, who is our parent and community liaison, "Esmeralda Leon Cortez is kind, genuine, and responsible student who exemplifies academic dedication and strong communication skills. She does not let her personal challenges hold her back, demonstrating resilience and leadership in all that she does. As an exemplary student leader, she actively supports ELAC initiatives alongside her dad, fostering a sense of community and advocacy. Esmeralda's drive for self-improvement and commitment to her future make her a standout individual. Ready to embrace the next phase of her journey with determination and purpose." Also, she is from Mr. Mutzuris, "She is quiet, she has a good attitude, and she works hard." So, with no further ado, I would like to introduce Esmeralda Leon Cortez.
Good evening, members of the school board and Dr. Masetti. My name is Esmeralda, and I would like to take a moment to reflect on my journey. First and foremost, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to my father and sister for their amazing support throughout my journey. I would also like to express my sincere gratitude to the board and the Napa Valley Education Foundation for the Student of the Month Award. My journey began at Napa High High School as a ninth grader. I initially was performing well academically. However, I soon experienced a decrease in both my grades and attendance. Recognizing the need for a change, I transitioned to Independent Studies mid-year in ninth grade. Unfortunately, I faced similar challenges there. This ultimately resulted in my placement at Valley Oak High School when I was transferred to Valley Oak High School as a junior. Initially, I felt like an outcast and experienced significant stress due to the numerous headaches I needed to make up. However, after spending both my, both my junior and now senior year there, I have developed a strong sense of belonging. Valley Oak High School is an outstanding school, and I truly appreciate how all the teachers are genuinely committed to helping students succeed and improve. Unfortunately, I did not have any member experience at Independent Studies, which ultimately led me to Valley Oak High School. I am grateful to have found an environment that aligns with my educational needs and supports my growth. They are dedicated to seeing us excel and reach our full potential. My plans after high school is to attend Napa Valley Community College and pursue a course in criminal justice. I am motivated by a desire to help people feel heard and to serve justice to those in need. Thank you all for taking the time to hear about my journey and experience throughout my high school years."
And also Assistant Superintendent Page, thank you for being there on Sunday for the WASC visit as well. I apologize. Our, I believe it's February Student of the Month is Oscar Talpa Santoya. I hope I pronounce that correctly because I've asked him like five times how I should pronounce it. So, again, I'm just going to read a few things from Oscar's teacher, teachers. Ms. Markle, again, who is the ELD teacher at Valley Oak High School. "Oscar is a golden acorn student," that's what we call our, our leaders for the ELD program. "Oscar is a golden acorn student ambassador who actively participates in focus groups and is part of the student welcome to campus team when community partners visit Valley Oak High School." Oscar is also, from Ms. Chucker, "an amazing class leader, a helper, and an amazing digital artist." Vero Gomez, who is our instructional assistant, again, for our ELD program, "an amazing student. He helped other students by interpreting when I was busy helping others for him. He is very patient and kind. He works diligently, has a positive attitude, and a pleasure to have in class. A leader and a responsible student." Also, from Mr. Mutzuris, "Positive attitude, hardworking, and great at communicating with his teachers." Actually, I think that was Ms. Tenley. I apologize. Oscar is also, along with Esme, is one of our two students who have attended our after-school credit recovery class since the beginning of the school year. Make it in a very long day. With no further ado, Oscar, come on up.
I would like to thank my mom and my grandparents for giving me the support in my academic studies and high. And thank you to the Napa Valley Education Foundation and the board for rewarding me with this award. Thank you to my, my school and my former schools, Valley Oak, Napa High, Harvest, and Snow Elementary, for providing me with all sorts of educational information that I will use in my life. I got here by pushing myself and to my limits into success. Some classes I, I had academic success in, and I enjoyed. It was science with Ms. Julie. And I also thank all my teachers from Valley Oak. After high school, I would like to, I would like to be a mechanic or a welder because I, I just really like getting my hands dirty. And I hope to aim high, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are we doing?
NVIS.
Oh, and then NVIS. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And also, Brian Marcus, that's why you're staying at the podium.
You're like, go sit down, Brian.
I'm slow, but I got there. Okay.
I actually am going to go either stand in the back or sit down because I'm going to hand it over to Erin Riley and Holly, who are education specialists for Napa Valley Independent Studies and teacher for Independent Studies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. And welcome, Erin Riley. Thank you. Please present the Students of the Month for Napa Valley Independent Studies.
All right. Okay, sounds good. All right, so I'm here to, actually, both of my students are being honored tonight, so I'm very proud of both of them, but I'm going to talk about Leo right now. It's an absolute honor to stand before you tonight and recognize an exceptional student who truly embodies the spirit of academic excellence, leadership, and service to others. Our Student of the Month, Leo, is not just a remarkable student, he's a role model, a mentor, and an inspiration to those around him. Leo has consistently demonstrated outstanding academic achievements, particularly in challenging subjects such as math and physics. However, what sets him apart is not just his mastery of these subjects, but his willingness to share his knowledge with others. He is always the first to step in when a classmate is struggling, patiently explaining difficult concepts and ensuring that everyone has the support that they need to succeed. But Leo's impact doesn't just stop in the classroom. His passion for aviation is nothing short of extraordinary. As a part of the Aviation Explorers Program at the Napa Valley Airport, Leo doesn't just study aviation, he teaches it. He dedicates countless hours preparing lessons and working with the explorers, passing on his enthusiasm and knowledge to the next generation of young aviation enthusiasts. His meticulous preparation, thoughtful teaching, and genuine love for the subject make him an incredible educator even at 16. He's almost 17. So, I think it's safe to say that if you were an aviation enthusiast before meeting Leo, you certainly are now. His passion is contagious, his dedication is inspiring, and his ability to lead and teach at such a young age is truly remarkable. Leo is proof that when you combine passion with hard work and a willingness to help others, incredible things happen. He is not only excelling academically, but also making a lasting impact on his peers and community. For all these reasons and more, it's my great pleasure to recognize Leo for Student of the
My name is Leo. I'm honored to be given this award by the board and Napa Valley Education Foundation. I moved to Napa in the summer of 2019, and I started school here at Silverado Middle School. And then, I graduated to Napa High School, and there I found success in the robotics program, construction, and physics. During my sophomore year, I joined the Napa Celarets Robotics Team and competed in first robotics competition. In March of last year, I was offered a, I was offered to join the Aviation Explorers Program, and so, in March, I got accepted and started attending their classes. During my first session, I began helping out during the weekends and ensuring safety at the airport and started, started helping out as much as I could. And past that first session, I continued helping out as, as much as I could with the classes and spread my, my aviation enthusiasm. I, after I graduate high school, I'd like to go to Sacramento City College and train to be an aircraft mechanic and fix airplanes for a living because I like to get my hands dirty, I like to work with my hands, I find it very fun, and furthers my learning past the books. I, I'm also, I have also earned a scholarship to go to EA Air Academy in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and that'll also further my, my enthusiasm and knowledge of aviation. My teachers, my family, mentors, and friends have all furthered my, my learning and success and brought me all the way to where I'm at now, and I'm eternally grateful. Thank you again for the recognition and the award.
Good evening, NVUSD Board members. I'm Erin Riley, and I'm Education Specialist at Napa Valley Independent Studies. I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity tonight to speak to you. Eleven short months ago, I attended an IEP meeting at Napa High for a student who had requested to attend NVIS for the fall of this year. I was politely greeted by a young man with a big, broad, shiny smile and a firm handshake. He answered my inquiries, and he asked many questions of his own about the program, which is something that I don't always encounter. I learned that he is a student who throughout his educational career has not often felt validated or has felt viewed through only a very small lens. So, he's just kind of been invested in just finishing school. But I've watched Noah grow, not only as a student, but as a young adult and ready to embark on his future with oodles of potential and success ahead of him. He has a lot to share about himself, and so, for now, it's my honor to introduce you to our February Student of the Month, Noah Villanueva.
I started my education at Salvador Elementary, and then, I moved to Oregon and attended Belair for my fourth and fifth year, fifth grade. When we came back to Napa, I attended Redwood Middle School for three years. I started high school at Vintage, but then moved to Napa High because I was struggling with some attendance issues and grades. In 11th grade at Napa High, I was fortunate to have Ms. DeJulio for directed studies. She helped me a lot with my work, and she helped me get into NVIS, which I wasn't able to before. I started attending and putting in more effort, and I'm glad I did because NVIS doesn't take students on contract. But Ms. Dee talked to Ms. Riley at NVIS, who advocated for me to come to NVIS for my senior year. I went from poor grades and struggling with some attendance problems, intending NVIS where I could come just once a month, I mean, just a week. Made sure I got my work done and was able to keep up working with my job with Cool School at Alta Heights. I am proud of the work I'm doing here, and now, I'm on track to graduate by spring break. I even brought my GPA to a 3 point, which I never experienced before. Ms. Riley has been so helpful to me since coming to NVIS. I'm glad she took a chance on me. My plan after graduation has been, my plan after graduation has been to become a police officer, but I'm also considering going into military. I want to thank NVIS, I mean, NVUSD Board of Education and Napa Valley Education Foundation for recognizing me here tonight. I want to thank my mom, my girlfriend, my grandparents, and Ms. Riley, my case manager, for their support and encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and congratulations to all of our Students of the Month. Okay, now, we are at G in our agenda, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Gonzalez-Mares, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comment on non-agenda items. Were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Okay, thank you very much. And I believe we do have, are these non-agenda items?
Yeah.
We do have public comment on non-agenda items present here in the boardroom. So, I'm going to give it another 30 seconds for people to have their exit. Okay, so, let me begin calling up Ashley Walker to the microphone for your public
Good afternoon, trustees. My name is Ashley Walker, and I am a proud mom of three, with my eldest daughter attending Willow Elementary School and the other two joining her in the coming years as they age up. We're here tonight because our Willow School community was We're here tonight because our Willow school community was made aware of an email that the Visi School Community received from Susan Miller, Director of Enrollment and Accountability. The email stated that the district would be exploring the potential opportunity to transition Visi Elementary to a TK through eight program beginning next school year, and that this exploration was being driven by specific interests from the Visi community. We are here tonight to share that Willow parents and our school community also have an interest in housing a TK through eight program, and we would also like to be considered for this opportunity, and we would appreciate equitable consideration in this expansion process. Willow is a diverse campus with a lively school community, and we would love more transparency about how these decisions are being made and what equity considerations are at play in the process. As I'm sure you all know, our school is an art magnet program with no matching feeder magnet middle school dedicated to our students, while other magnet elementary schools in the district, such as NVLA, have a matching magnet middle school option in Unidos. And so, our Willow students have no feeder match at the moment, and that is a tension that we're working through in our community. So, continuing our campus through eighth grade would allow our students the access to move into middle school with the learning style and setting that so many of them are currently thriving with at our Willow magnet program. We are very grateful to hear that NVUSD is exploring adding additional TK through eight school sites. As a former middle school teacher myself, we know that many data studies have shown that this TK through eight program is really beneficial for learning and academic outcomes, and so we are in support of exploring that expansion. We are just here tonight to ask the district to make this decision transparently with a clear commitment and consideration to equity and partnership with the community through the process.
Thank you very much. Next up, Catherine Van Trees.
Good evening, trustees. My name's Catherine Van Trees. I have two daughters, one who currently attends Willow, the other one will be starting kindergarten next year in the fall. I'm also here to express my support for the idea, exploring the idea of transitioning Willow into a TK through eight school. We have a lot of parents within our community who have been talking about this, have been interested in it. We kind of heard it was maybe happening at Visi and then saw the letter today, and we felt compelled to come and speak and let you know that we have an interest in the same thing. And we would really like to explore this in partnership with the district. Our school, as you know, and as Ashley mentioned, is a magnet school with an emphasis on artful learning. In the last few weeks, Unidos teachers have been over visiting Willow because they are currently implementing artful learning as well. And when we heard that Unidos was going to take on the program, a lot of us were really excited, like, yay, maybe this means we can feed our kids there. Unfortunately for us, it sounds like Unidos is going to remain a feeder for dual immersion, which is a good thing, but we also want an option for our kids. As a former teacher in the district, until very recently, I can say with utter, complete confidence that what we have at Willow is very unique. This morning, we walked through the first grade classrooms, the engagement, the curiosity, the inquiry units, like, what they are doing there is special, and if you haven't been there and you haven't seen it, I encourage you to go. We want to make sure that we can provide that type of learning for our students in middle school. I was a middle school teacher here in the district. We feel like students, teachers, parents, everyone is benefiting as a whole from this program, the community, and we want to include...giving us the option to include middle school would give students and parents a different choice outside of their traditional middle schools in the community, which I'm very familiar with. We are here tonight to implore the district to partner with us in exploring the expansion of Willow Elementary to a TK through eight school, just as you have done with Visi. We're urging our district partners to be transparent in your exploration of additional options for sixth to eighth grade students within the district. I know there's a lot of anxiety for elementary parents around the transition to middle school. We want to partner with you, we want to understand the process, and I think a lot of us are feeling like, how do we get there? How does this happen? We brought it up, you know, with our principal, we haven't heard, you know, what are next steps, so that's why we're here. And with equity for all NVUSD students at the heart of the decision-making process, we feel that all stakeholders should have a voice in the options and opportunities for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is coming from Carly Lalum.
Hi, my name is Carly Lalum. My daughter attends Willow Elementary as well. She's a first grader. We love the school and the program. And I'm also here tonight to share my support and interest in housing a TK through eight expansion on our campus, and just that we would really appreciate equal consideration in the expansion process. Thank you.
Thank you. Please welcome Catalina Chavratapia, next. Thank you. Chavez, sorry.
Hi, good evening. I was in plan and speaking, but I want to give you some good news. I work with ParentsCAN, and we're doing a leadership for parents to get engaged in their children's education. So, we are going to be visiting several boards in the valley, and I'm very proud of the parents that are here, and just want to acknowledge that they go through an 11-week class, and then we do a mentoring program for them to really understand what the education system is, and so that's why we're here. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you all for being here.
Our translator online, we're going to have a speaker in Spanish, so I just want you to be prepared after the speaker speaks in Spanish to provide the translation. Estabais?
Gracias. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Beatriz Calderon. Yo formo parte del equipo de liderazgo de ParentsCAN, y estamos aquí para aprender cómo ser padres, líderes de la comunidad, y con estas oportunidades, aprender cómo hacer la diferencia dentro de todo lo que está serviendo. Muchas gracias.
My name is Beatriz Calderon, and I'm just...I'm here to learn about the different opportunities and to learn everything that could benefit us here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Myra Becerra and fellow counselors.
It's Myra Bogardine now. Got married. Did they put Becerra?
You did.
You did.
I read what you wrote.
Someone wrote it for me. Anyways, good evening, everyone. My name is Myra Bogardine, counselor for the district, counselor at Napa High in particular. I've worked in the district for 16 years now, and I'm here to speak on behalf of what we do. So, in case you're wondering what I've done the last five years, I'm sorry, the last five days, here it goes. Today, I started my day at 8:30 in the morning. I visited a supported English class for students who have an IEP. I met with them individually to discuss classes for next year to ensure that they had a voice in selecting courses that are hopefully connecting them to a career. So, we talked about electives and how that connects to careers. After meeting with 10 students with an IEP, I went to my MTSS meeting where we identified students who are struggling academically and who need to follow up with to ensure their success. After that meeting, I went to make phone calls to schedule two SARC meetings to address our attendance concerns and ensure that we're providing the supports necessary to get them to school. I also made a parent appointment for next week to talk about a student who's not doing academically well, so I want to make sure that we bring in the parent and communicate with them to provide the academic resources that we can provide to ensure their success. After that, I met with the student and created a four-year academic plan. So, we went on ARISE, and we uploaded their four-year courses to ensure that she can achieve her goal of being a first-generation Latina to go and achieve a career as a lawyer. So, we talked about AP classes to ensure that she is taking opportunity of those, but also explore taking college classes over the summer so she can challenge herself a little bit more. After that, I visited the Avid class to ensure that they're aware of our AP history class that we're offering during early flight next school year. It is going to be a college class that we offer on our campus, and I know sometimes our Avid students have a hard time including their VPA course into their day because they're taking Avid for four years, and top of that, they're taking all their academic courses. So, sometimes, including their VPA is a challenge, but thankfully, we're going to offer that course early flight. After that, I went back to my office because they texted me saying that my other appointment was waiting, so I ran back to my office to meet with the student who we've connected very well. She's a victim of sexual abuse, and she and I have connected greatly this school year. I provided some emotional support, but she came to tell me that she was going to have to go to Vacaville next year because they had to move due to housing challenges. After that, two boys came to my office during lunchtime. We talked about electives. They wanted to change their electives, and I said, how about construction? Have you ever heard about the trades? So, I walked them over as I ate my lunch. I walked them over during their lunchtime to the construction class and talked to them about what the trades are, because they said college is not for them, so talked to them about what careers they can pursue in the trades. After that, I met with the parent and her dad, who is a single dad, to talk about summer classes at the college, because she's going to be the first in her family to go to college. And I can go on and on and talk about all the different things that we do as counselors, but I really wanted to make you aware of the plethora of things that we do as counselors, because people sometimes don't realize how much we do. And there are currently two positions on the table possibly being cut, and I just really implore that you consider not cutting resources that directly impact students, because cutting counselors will directly impact everything I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Cindy Johnson, and I'm also a counselor here with Myra, and thank you very much for having us here tonight. We are here as one of the agenda items is a proposed cut of 2.0 FTE of counseling. This came as a complete shock to our district counseling team, elementary, middle, and high school. Given the strategic goals of NVUSD and the priority of student health and wellness and college and career readiness, counselors are on the front lines of this initiative with our organization, within our organization. These proposed cuts fly in direct opposition to the NVUSD mission. As we as NVUSD counselors not only ask that this board reject these cuts, but we request that the wellness centers be staffed with permanent positions, not temporary. To pass a resolution that reducing these services is in the best interest of our district is turning our backs on the mission of the NVUSD, and in fact, will cause damage to our schools and programs across all grade levels. Please reject these cuts and further validate your commitment to the emotional, personal, social, and academic needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, our next commenter, Cassandra Espinoza Martinez.
Hi, good evening, Board. Hope you all are doing well. My name is Cassandra Espinoza Martinez. I work at ParentsCAN. I'm the program assistant. I'm here with our group of parents, Beatriz, Ana Lilia, and with our parent teacher coordinator, Catalina Chavratapia Chavez, and I'm just here just to, you know, we work with specifically families with children with disabilities, so we obviously, we work with special education. And given the current administration's actions in decimating the Department of U.S. Education, there's been an influx of parents, especially parents of different racial and ethnic identities, coming with very valid concerns about the state of special education and what that looks like if it gets moved from the Department of Education to possibly the Human Health and Services Department, and I'm just here to urge you all to continuing protecting students' rights and parents' rights, even with little oversight, just to acknowledge that inclusion, diversity, equity is paramount to fostering not only the beautiful things we see in the valley and grow. I mean, I am a product of the NVUSD school district. My sister unfortunately could not attend today to tell her story, but she diagnosed with autism. She actually also is a product of the NVUSD system. She went to Napa Valley College, and she is a recent Berkeley graduate, and she's now working as a substitute teacher for NVUSD, and she's loved it so far. However, the concerns still remain that what will occur either way, just know we are ready to help parents know their rights, and I hope you all just continuing supporting the missions, and we are also here to support you all as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, and the last commenter in the boardroom is Shannon Puch.
Hi, good evening. I'm Shannon Puch. I'm with my other fellow Willow parents. I have two kids at Willow Elementary. I stand with the parents here. I'm actually the Willow PTA president, and I'm most concerned about sustaining our school. So, we know that there's Prop 28 funds out there. We're just having a difficulty securing those, so we need some direction about how to do that, because we're looking at going into next school year with a deficit. And so, we're begging our community all the time for money, but of course, the families feel very stretched about that. So, there's only so much begging and we can do and so many fundraisers, and so we want to see how we can sustain that so we can keep up our artful learning program and keep that awesome program that we have going, because of course, we don't have any more magnet funds. So, any direction and help with that, we would much appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Puch, I'm going to ask that regarding Prop 28, if you could...Dr. Reddy is going to take down your name and contact phone number so we can get clear on the Prop 28 plan for Willow.
Sure.
Okay, so thank you to all of our...for all of our engagement here in the boardroom. Are there any public comments online, Mr. Michaels?
There are no public comments online.
Thank you very much. Okay, that brings us to H Reports, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Student Board Member Grayden, would you like to kick it off?
Of course. Good evening, everyone. I hope that all is well. First, I want to start off by saying, no, I have not received my admission decision for Howard yet. I'm just wearing the hoodie because this is my favorite crew neck that I have. Okay, so on March 5th, I concluded my three-year-long orthodontic treatment and had my braces removed. Please pardon...please pardon the fabulous, because I am now stuck with retainers for a month. I miss them, and I'm very much still getting used to my teeth. On March 11th, I attended the ribbon cutting at Canyon Oaks Elementary School and American Canyon High School. I was absolutely full of joy to help unveil our facility improvements, which might I add, look absolutely amazing. My favorite part was the elementary schoolers saying our names and like cheering with their hands. I loved it so much. On March 12th, I attended a student advisory meeting where I led a community connector activity called Snowball Fight, basically wrote a bunch of questions on pieces of paper and threw them at each other, not violently, very child-friendly, and we just picked up a question and were able to answer whatever question it was next to the nearest person that was near it, with the nearest person next to us. I wrote pigeons or seagulls, which one is better? I think they're both terrible, but okay. We then proceeded to discuss our LCAP and cell phone policies. On March 12th, I also received admission to my second choice college, Xavier University of Louisiana, with a $14,000 scholarship. Yeah, and that concludes my report.
Well, that's a tough one to follow, trustee and trustee Grayden, but if anyone can do it, trustee water cans.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, I was not able to attend my usual cavalcade of functions because I've been doing a lot of childcare for a member of the future Napa High class of 2043, because the father is busy graduating from UC Davis, and the mother is an accountant and it's tax season. So, you know, but it's very fulfilling. However, I did a lot of community outreach, and you know, my suggestion, if you want to do that, take a shower, wash your hair, go to the grocery store with no makeup and wet hair, and to quote F. Scott Fitzgerald... And to quote F. Scott Fitzgerald, "The world and his mistress will greet you at the produce counter with their queries, complaints, you know, the usual." So that's the way you do it. I did nominate a student, I did nominate a student for visual and performing arts, you know, student of the month last month, and she won. And so that was great, Ms. Gil Galen. And I attended the, I did attend the WASC meeting at Valley Oak along with our HR director. And it was lots of fun. There was some really delightful students and some really good parent input, very spirited. And I'm just glad I went. And I went to the Napa County Office of Education meeting virtually and it was, you know, it's very interesting. And I had a very pleasant lunch with Deb St. Clair and Troy Giddings, who are here tonight. We had a, you know, very affable meeting. It was a lot of fun. And that's the end of my report. I will be freed on April 15th.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Trustee Martin?
On February 18th, I visited Redwood Middle School and Northwood Elementary Schools. Then I attended the Facilities and Technology Meeting with Dr. Masetti. On February 20th, I attended Dr. Masetti's interim evaluation. On February 22nd and March 8th, I attended CSBA's first and second masters in governance trainings. And I would like to thank American Canyon High School football coach, Coach Hudson, for his incredible service. I wish him well in his future endeavors. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Trustee Jankowitz?
Happy belated International Women's Day on March 8th. And March is Women's History Month and here's to all of the women and their contributions to education and beyond. I had the, I met with Willow parents to discuss arts integration and its impact on students. I had the opportunity to meet with some educators that were being impacted by school closures. This will speak to my comments on second interim. I, along with my peers, attended the superintendent midterm evaluation. The board submitted our individual board self-evaluation surveys this week. I attended an acknowledgement event for individuals, volunteers that have been deeply committed to the improvement of the NVUSD student experience. I met with retired veteran board Joe Shunk. He continues to be a wealth of information and perspective. I met with a group of families interested from private schools interested in attending NVUSD schools. It was a great meeting. I had a call with someone in the music department here and that had questions about Prop 28. I met with Jennifer Stewart from the Ed Foundation. I attended the NCOE board meeting via Zoom. I attended, although very brief, the Wellness Conference where I did an incredible drumming session with President Reiser. I met with vintage families. Huge shout out to the ACHS Winter Guard. I attended the Legislative Action Week briefing seminar. I was fortunate to attend the Stars Network Summer Program webinar, which was a comprehensive explanation of their summer program. I was delighted to attend the ribbon cutting at Canyon Oaks Elementary and American Canyon High School. The little, I will call them acorns, mighty oaks were darling, well behaved. They sang and the choir at ACHS was perfection. This week is Legislative Action Week. It's an opportunity for delegates and trustees to speak with elected officials. We met with Assemblymember Damon Connolly representing District 12. We met with Assemblymember Lori Wilson representing District 11. I attended a Zoom webinar from Power School on the power of data positively impact attendance. We met with Chris Cabaldon staffer, Toby Upden-Villa, our state senator for the third district, President Reiser, and I were fortunate enough to witness the first Stars College Network surprise event at Vintage High School. Right before our board meeting, we met with Assemblymember Majority Leader Cecilia Aguilar-Curry, representing the fourth district. I continue to thank the tech department and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right. First of all, I want to give Riley a thumbs up for manifesting her Howard-ness right there. And we're all pulling for you.
We are.
We're waiting to hear the good news soon. All right, I was not at our last meeting, so I'm going to go all the way back to January and I'll go fast, I promise. January 22nd and 23rd, we all participated in the CSBA Good Beginnings Workshop and that was a great opportunity for us to gel together as a new team as we have a new team member this year. On the 27th, I attended the Special Education Community Advisory Committee, which I will give a report on in more detail shortly. On the 28th, I virtually attended the NVUSD Employee of the Year Celebration, which is Dana's Time to Shine and Dress in All the Sparkles and I celebrate all of our amazing employees that we have. On the 6th and 7th of February, I did our Masters in Governance course, which is put on by CSBA, the California School Boards Association. That particular topic, again, human resources and collective bargaining. So that was very informative and learned a lot there. On the 20th, along with my fellow trustees, attended the special session for the superintendent midterm evaluation. On the 22nd of February, I completed my Masters in Governance classes, so I am now done and can check that one off. On the 12th, along with Trustee Jankowitz, I participated in the CSBA Legislative Action Week where we meet with local elected officials, as she mentioned, and advocate for the needs of our students, which is an important part of our job and something that's very needed, unfortunately, for us to make sure that they don't forget about us out here. And I would like to point out for the record that I completed my board self-evaluation survey on time without any special reminders. Thank you. That concludes my report.
It's the little victories, right? Thank you, Trustee Hart. Trustee Gonzalez-Motress?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I think since our last meeting in February, a few things. I attended the, our annual midterm evaluation with Dr. Masetti in regards to her work at this point. I did also, you know, in that process, as a follow-up, we were all required and glad that IT also completed the board self-evaluation. Attended earlier, that was earlier this week, right? The Canyon Oaks.
Two days ago.
That was this week. And that was just, any time to celebrate a passage of a bond and seeing the fruits of that labor. Because it really takes, to quote our president, Reiser, "It takes a village to pass a bond as it does, just as it takes a village to raise a kiddo." And so, and then followed that was the American Canyon High School. I had to leave a little early, but hearing the response here, it sounds like it was a wonderful event as well. And also attended the finance committee where you'll see a more thorough report in the interim in regards to the status of our finances. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
Good evening. On March 4th, I met with the NVEA Political Action Committee, including Ms. Amy Bardwell, who was my younger son's second grade teacher in the middle of the pandemic, and Mr. Franklin Hernandez, who is an Unidos teacher. Thank you both for meeting with me and having a great discussion and fun discussion. It's always great to meet with teachers. On that night, I actually attended the Stars Network Summer Program webinar, which was the first kind of the kickoff for the activities for the Stars College Network for NVUSD. It was great. They had a lot of questions from parents, all answered. And it's just amazing how much support they are giving our students. And I do know a few students who will be applying to the summer programs at either Vanderbilt, Northwestern, or University of Chicago. And just a plug out there, those applications are still open. And I believe the Chicago program is open for NVUSD students by exception. So I'm encouraging everyone out there who has a 10th, 11th, 12th grader, I think it's those are the grades, right, to sign up. Wonderful opportunity. On the 11th, as other trustees have noted, we had the ribbon cutting at Canyon Oaks Elementary and ACHS. Always wonderful to meet with my community and engage with all the wonderful work that's been happening there. Love the second graders who were singing and of course, the ACHS choir. And just wonderful experience. And then yesterday, I also attended the finance committee. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, I will try to be quick with the overlap. On the February 22nd, February 20th, the special board meeting, I was also participated in. On March 6th and 7th, I had the privilege of attending two days of the Napa Valley Wellness Conference, which is, I think, my third or fourth year attending. It's just a really meaningful gathering and we're so grateful for our partnership with Napa Valley Ed Foundation for putting that on and bringing school counselors, mental health workers, administrators, and a trustee together to focus on how we cultivate the climate and culture of belonging and welcoming for our students and prioritizing self-care and wellness for those of us who are the caregivers and the providers ourselves. And amazing keynote speakers as well. And it was wonderful to have an opportunity to attend the morning sessions with Dr. Masetti. We don't get a lot of unagendized time, so that was lovely. On March 9th, I attended the Napa High Musical Mean Girls with my Napa High Musical Theater alum daughter, Maya. Always wonderful to see those productions and particularly timely, I think, with the themes of belonging versus othering and the impact of that. So I really appreciated how that lined up with sort of the work that we're doing to cultivate acceptance and belonging for all of our students. And it's of course, a dazzling performance with really great singing and a great job to our, to the choir department there. Let's see, on the 11th, I also attended the celebration of the A2 in action. It's incredibly gratifying to see the improvements of the facilities, to see us getting closer and closer to having all of our students in NVUSD have facilities that we and they can feel proud of. And so the outdoor learning space and the bold paint job at ACHS were just both wonderful examples. And we continue to be incredibly grateful to the community of American Canyon for passing that Bond A2 and also to Napa. Measure B results to come, to continue rolling out as time passes. Let's see, yesterday, I attended the finance committee as well, had my regular pre-board meeting, president's meeting with Dr. Masetti to prepare for the meeting. And then after that, attended the Napa Climate Summit that was hosted at Napa Valley College. That was a partnership, was a project put on, as I understand, by our own student activists, the Students for Climate Action. So we are so proud of them and their activism and their, you know, walking the walk and with the support of NVUSD. And also, we had another collaborator was someone that collaborates with us on our solar energy, Go Paul Shankar, told me that he was also participated in that. So nice to see those connections across the community. And of course, shout out to Jim Wilson, who continues to provide amazing mentorship for those student advocate leaders. And we had Liliana Koresh was the panel moderator as a senior in high school, moderating a panel that included our state Senator Cabaldon, Napa County Supervisor Joel Gallagher, and our own Mario Landero, speaking to our college and career readiness program. So that was an amazing and impressive event. And I didn't stick around for the job fair, but there were 15 employers there ready to offer information and leads to interested high school and Napa Valley College students. So that was just an amazing win. And then today, I had the opportunity to wake up and participate in the first Stars College Network Surprise Ad-Admit and Event at Vintage High. More to come on that. And then along with ongoing engagement with the community via email and in person, I also participated. I was only able to join one advocacy call, but today, this afternoon's advocacy with our majority leader Aguilar-Curry, again, just presenting the issues most central to our public schools statewide, advocating, trying to stay on their radar in really difficult funding times, just trying to be the squeaky wheel that gets the funding. And that concludes my report. Dr. Masetti? We are now, oh, I'm sorry. Now we have, I always want to skip that one. Okay, so now we have our board representative reports, the Special Education Community Advisory Committee. Trustee Hart?
All right, thank you. So back in January, on the 27th, the Special Education Community Advisory Committee met. Our first presentation of the evening was very inspiring. It was Ellen Swiger, who is a North Bay Regional Center consumer advocate. She is a young lady who happens to have Down Syndrome. And she spoke to us about her journey to become a disability advocate. She said a lot of amazing things. The things that stuck most with me is that she found inspiration in Helen Keller and wanted to be like her, but representing people with Down Syndrome. She talked about the challenges that she had going through high school, the challenges she still faces as an adult, being labeled or predetermined what expectations people have of her, being bullied. And she also pointed out successes that she's had, including having an internship at Parents' Can, which is something that opened her eyes and taught her that she was capable of doing much more for her community. One of the main things that I pulled from her speech there was talking about IEP participation and encouraging children that have IEPs to participate, for parents to meet with them prior to and make sure that they're including their students in those meetings so that they're making accommodations that make sense for them and they have a voice, which I thought was amazing and something that I actually advocated for my own son when he was having his IEP meetings. Once he started participating, as he got older, they got to be a lot more directed and effective. After that, we heard from Kelsey Pettyholm, who is the director of the Napa County Selpa, which represents all the districts in Napa County. She talked about compliance and monitoring for special education, what the state performance plan indicators are, which I thought was very informative. They talked about things like graduation rates, statewide assessments, suspension and expulsion rates, preschool outcomes, and many, many other factors that are measured district by district so that they can make sure that things are being done correctly, which was pretty cool and informative. And that concludes my board there.
Thank you so much, Trustee Hart. Next committee is the City of American Canyon, two by two?
We have not met.
City of Napa liaison?
We have not met.
And the Town of Yountville liaison representatives?
We have not met and we are no longer voted.
Okay. Yeah, next year.
Okay. To you.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And now that brings us to H3 Superintendent and Executive Staff Report.
Thank you, President Reiser. So good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. There have been some very happy moments in NVUSD over the past couple of weeks, as you picked up from our trustee reports. First, I'd like to thank Principal Megan DeLamater at Napa Junction and Principal Stephanie Vasquez at Canyon Oaks for inviting me to participate in their Read Across America activities. I had the opportunity to read in a TK. They're little, very little. They made the kindergartner, kindergarteners the next hour look very mature and large. Then I was in a two-three combo and then I ended my reading tour in American Canyon with a fifth grade classroom. So it was great to be with the American Canyon students at both schools. I was amazed by their engagement, even those four-year-olds, their participation, their comprehension, and all of the personal connections that students made to the texts that I got to read aloud. Staying focused on our schools in American Canyon, as some of the trustees shared, it was fantastic to celebrate the first two Measure A2 projects that were completed earlier this year, the outdoor learning spaces at Canyon Oaks and the painting project at American Canyon High School. As I shared in my remarks at both events, we are so grateful for the support of the American Canyon voters. By passing Measure A2, American Canyon voters chose to invest in their schools and children. Strong schools make strong children and strong children make strong communities. Thank you to the attendees for coming out to celebrate with us. And thank you to our staff and the Van Pelt team for organizing all of the details for such a positive, successful community celebration of our Measure A2 implementation in progress. We are looking forward to similar celebratory events in Napa as we launch Measure B projects this summer at our Target Elementary Schools and Silverado Middle School. So stay tuned in the Napa community for details about those future celebrations coming in the fall. As if a few read alouds and a couple of ribbon cuttings in one week were not enough, our first Stars College Network Surprise Admit event, as stated by trustee Reiser and trustee Jankowitz, earlier today felt like a professional dream come true. Being able to create a pipeline, specific pipeline, for qualified NVUSD students to a network of excellent colleges with full scholarships is truly amazing. Today, our first student to benefit from the Stars College Network and NVUSD partnership was Vintage High School senior Madeline Chu, along with her parents, who were surprised to learn that Madeline was awarded a four-year full ride to the University of Chicago. Go Maroons! Instead of me telling you about it, we're going to show you a video of this precious moment.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Jim Nandorf. I'm the dean of admissions at the university. I'm the Dean of Admissions at the University of Chicago, actually. And I know you were thinking this was just going to be an interview, but instead, I just went to tell you how awesome you are, and that you are right now officially admitted to the University of Chicago. So welcome to the UChicago family.
Oh my goodness, thank you so much.
I have even more exciting news, and that is, not only have you been admitted because you're amazing, but you are also receiving a full tuition scholarship to the University of Chicago. So we will pay for your entire tuition to come, and I think as happy as you might be, there are others who are about to join us that might even be happier. So I think your parents are actually on the Zoom too, and if we could...
Oh my gosh!
Hello, Maddie.
Thank you.
How are you?
Congratulations, Maddie.
Congratulations, Maddie.
Oh my goodness, thank you.
No, you were amazing. This year, we had 45,000 applicants and a 4% admit rate, and out of all of those amazing students, you stood out. You're incredible, and we are so excited to have you at the University of Chicago.
We just want to say thank you. We're, yes, we love Maddie. She's great of a daughter, as anyone could ask for. We're just so appreciative of this opportunity and the generous offer, generous scholarship. And so, thank you so much.
Congratulations! We're so excited. I'm Dr. Rosanna Masetti. I'm the Superintendent of Schools here in the Napa Valley Unified School District. We are so proud of Madeline. This is the result of our partnership with the Stars College Network here in NVUSD, and Madeline is our first recipient of the generous opportunity at one of the most elite colleges in the country, and we could not ask for a better representative to be the first of this amazing partnership that will be made available to more students of NVUSD in the future. Like they said, welcome to the UChicago family, and we're so excited to send one of our NVUSD family members off to UChicago. So congratulations around this incredible opportunity.
I don't even know what to say. I just thank you so much. I did not think this was going to be happening. I was actually really nervous to come in here today, but I'm just so grateful that you're giving me this opportunity, so thank you.
Hopefully, the first of many.
All right, well, that's the highlight of my report. Not a lot more to say after that. I do, Kelly Watkins is here in the audience today. I want to thank her for all of her coordination and all of the staff, Vintage High School, Principal Hutchinson, you know, Dr. Reddy and Mario Landeros. This is just the first, you know, I know our counselors are here for a different reason, but I am grateful that you're here to just share this moment with us, because I know that that resonates with the work that you do. This is just the first and the beginning of opportunities like these emerging for NVUSD students over the next few years, as the Star College Network focuses on increasing college attainment for students from small-town and rural schools like ours and NVUSD. We have been chosen as the national pilot district for this effort. Right now, our college and career readiness team is working, as trustee Chu said, to recruit dozens and dozens and dozens of NVUSD high schoolers to attend fully-funded summer pre-college programs at the elite colleges Northwestern, the University of Chicago, and Vanderbilt, with those opportunities expanding across the network colleges over the next few years. We're so excited to be able to bring this level of equity and access to our amazing students who we know will thrive in these settings. Thank you to the, switching gears, I'm switching gears. Thank you to the parents, teachers and students that I was able to work with this past week. It was mentioned by our Student Board trustee. We've been gathering feedback and input regarding our proposed revisions to the NVUSD cellphone policy as we prepare to implement a more consistent policy and a new clearly-defined administrative regulation to get that consistency across all of our campuses, elementary, middle and high, in the 25, 26 school year. The students, I got to do kind of workshop revisions with them, and it was just a great experience, so I was really appreciative for all their engagement. Lastly, as I was preparing for this board meeting, I had a realization, it was five years ago today, on March 13th, 2020, that we were sitting here at this dais, and NVUSD made the difficult decision to close our schools in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. What followed was an unprecedented shift in education. Students, teachers, counselors, families faced challenges none of us could have imagined, from remote learning and social isolation to educational disruptions that reshaped the way we think about schooling and the impacts that we still feel today. Today, we can reflect on the resilience of our educators, support staff, students, parents, communities. We acknowledge the hardships endured, the learning gaps that would still need to be addressed, and the mental health challenges that continue to affect so many years later. At the same time, we recognize the innovations that emerged, greater use of technology, new approaches to student support, and a renewed appreciation for the role of schools in our society and communities. As we move forward, let us continue to learn from this experience, invest in education, and ensure that every student receives the support that they need to thrive, even while it feels like education is being attacked. The past five years have taught us the value of adaptability, the importance of connection, and the power of collective effort in overcoming adversity. As we enter spring, I am so grateful for the resilience and dedication of our NVUSD community that I've gotten to benefit from over the last seven years, as we've navigated numerous challenges and opportunities for growth. Thank you to parents, students and community members for all that you do to ensure that our students have the opportunities and support that they need during their educational journeys in NVUSD. So with that, I'm going to pass to the Assistant Superintendents, who are going to give reports in the areas that they oversee, and we're going to start with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden and Dr. Masetti. Last week, HR represented NVUSD at the Sacramento State Job Fair, where we met several alumni who were excited to be getting their teaching credential and would love to return to NVUSD as faculty. We also attended an informational meeting at Sonoma State University for the residency program that we co-host. There was great interest, and it looks like we will have several candidates next year participating in student teaching for the whole year, that's the basis of the program. These candidates are finalizing credentials in hard-to-fill areas like Spanish Dual Immersion, math and science. This Saturday, NVUSD will be at the UC Davis Teacher Job Fair, hoping to connect with prospective applicants there. HR Director Elizabeth Gonzalez and myself have the privilege of facilitating two days of outward mindset professional development using content and materials provided by the Arbinger Institute. We had a group of approximately 20 employees representing various jobs, such as classroom teachers, education specialists, instructional assistants, parent liaisons, custodians, clerical support and more. We were also joined by CSEA President Jackie Clayton and Chief Job Steward Richard Flower. The content was well-received and helpful for the participants. Elizabeth and I were excited to join the group of internal NVUSD trainers dedicated to bringing outward mindset training to every employee in the district over the next few years. Lastly, I want to thank all of our teachers, coaches, principals and panelists who participated in our mid-year review of the PAR pilot on February 26th and 27th. PAR stands for Peer Assistance and Review. It is a process established in partnership with NVEA to provide coaching to permanent teachers who have had areas in need of improvement based on their evaluations. The pilot includes seven teachers who are working with coaches. At the mid-year review, we heard about what was working well, where continued support was needed, and how the PAR panel can refine and improve the process before we expand to include more teachers. I want to commend the teachers for coming to this work with great attitudes and growth mindsets, and I want to express appreciation for the coaches, who are sharing their tremendous expertise, ideas and support with their colleagues. Based on the feedback from the mid-year check-in, we are very excited for the future of the Peer Assistance and Review Program. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Monica Reddy, the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Support Services.
Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden, Superintendent Dr. Masetti and the NVUSD community. February and March have been busy in the instructional world as we focus on supporting college and career readiness in NVUSD and developing a culture of student data usage through the NVUSD Professional Learning Day. In February, over 100 NVUSD students and parents attended the 2025 Steps to College Event at Cal Expo in Sacramento. This college fair assists families navigating the college application process with support from California and Mexican universities, as well as nonprofit educational organizations. Participants gathered insights from over 30 colleges and universities and attended workshops on FAFSA, career tech and legal advisory services. Parents also benefited from sessions on family orientations and Mexican consulate services. This event provided valuable resources to help families plan for their students' higher educational journeys, and I'd like to thank our Coordinator of Parent Engagement and our Community and Parent Liaisons for their support of this day. During the last week of February, the California Dual Enrollment Equity Conference showcased the incredible progress that Napa Valley Unified School District and Napa Valley College have made through partnership and collaboration in order to increase students' preparation for college and career. The NVUSD team was featured throughout the conference, as well as well-represented, thank you to our counselors for attending. Of note, two incredible ACHS students were featured during the lunchtime keynote, where they shared about their journey mentoring high school students through their early college journey. Following the NVUSD Board of Education approval of our partnership with the Stars Network, which you've all heard about tonight, we had a successful launch of two virtual meetings attended by 50 students and families combined. I'll keep that, this message short, but I would like to publicly thank Director Landeros and Counselor Kelly Watkins for their quick turnaround of this incredible program. It was a joy to witness this morning a student from Vintage High School receive a full-ride scholarship to University of Chicago, and I just want to publicly congratulate Madeline Chu, her family and the Vintage High School staff, and thank you to the University of Chicago for supporting our NVUSD student. In March, the ISS team shifted the focus to building systems to support a district-wide culture, wherein administrators and teachers understand the importance of student data, know how to access data and use data to drive decision-making, and aligning professional learning to the needs of students based on data. To that end, the NVUSD Professional Learning Community's Leadership Development Workshop Series for middle and high schools is moving into the final phase of the year. Both PLC leads and site administrators are actively participating in this learning journey to strengthen their leadership skills and improve student outcomes. In the first session, we focused on establishing a strong professional learning community culture, highlighting the differences between logistical meetings, planning meetings, and true PLC collaboration centered on student learning. During Session Two, participants explored the concept of a guaranteed and viable curriculum and why it is essential for student success. A guaranteed curriculum ensures that every student, no matter their school or teacher, learns the most critical content and skills for their greater subject. A viable curriculum means that teachers have enough instructional time to effectively teach these essential concepts. Understanding guaranteed and viable curriculum helps our PLC leaders and administrators guide teams through the PLC questions. What do we want? What are students expected to learn and by when? And how will we determine if they have learned it? In the final sessions coming up in March, participants will dive into the remaining questions that drive student growth. How do we support students who haven't mastered the content? And how do we extend learning for those who have? By working through this process together, PLC leaders and site administrators are building the skills needed to foster strong collaborative teams that focus on ensuring all students succeed. I would like to thank our PLC leaders and site administrators for their ongoing commitment to this work. On March 7th, NVUSD hosted the Professional Learning Day in a new fashion. Educators across the district engaged in meaningful collaboration at their school sites, analyzing student data, sharing best practices and strengthening collective efficacy. The energy and dedication to data-driven decision-making will have a lasting impact on student success. At the district office, special education teams engaged in rich discussions. Guest teachers participated in essential training, technology, engaged in strategic planning, and safety and medical sessions reinforced our commitment to student and staff well-being. A heartfelt thank you to site and district leaders, office managers and classified staff for ensuring a seamless and impactful day. We look forward to learning from the day as we consider how we support unified professional learning throughout our system. NVUSD counselors, social workers, parent liaisons and administrators attended the Napa Valley Education Foundation's Annual Wellness Conference as their professional learning. The event included school wellness center tours at Napa High School and Silverado Middle School, showcasing youth-driven wellness strategies such as universal mental health screenings and student-led mental health initiatives. I'd like to thank the staff of Napa High School and Silverado Middle School Wellness Centers for their work on those days, showcasing their programs. Keynote speaker, Dr. Allison Briscoe Smith, clinical psychologist and senior fellow at UC Berkeley's Greater Good Science Center, presented on cultural accountability and trauma-informed care. Attendees explored best practices for incorporating youth voices into sustainable wellness programs. Thank you to Napa Valley Education Foundation and their sponsors for hosting an incredible professional learning opportunity for our wellness staff. Lastly, on Wednesday, the Student Advisory Council, consisting of over 50 students in grade six through 12 from all NVUSD middle and high schools, met to learn about the local control and accountability plan and provide feedback on how to best support students in literacy, math and college and career readiness. Thank you to Student Board Representative Riley Grayden for kicking the morning off with a warm opener, a snowball, with question and answers that engage our students. Her positive role modeling and leadership set the stage for an active and empowering meeting. Students also engaged in thoughtful discussion about cellphone usage in the district's cellphone policy, sharing their recommendation on ways to strengthen and improve it with Dr. Masetti. The NVUSD Student Advisory Council continues to be an important student advisory group, engaged in advocacy and decision-making, and I thank our student leaders for their work. That concludes my report.
Right, next we have Assistant Superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees business and operational services.
I will forego my report tonight. I have two presentations later on the agenda.
Okay, President Reiser, that concludes the executive staff reports for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Masetti. That brings us to H4, the Facilities and Bond Program Update.
Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. Next slide, please. So I'm very excited to announce that we'll be raising lots of capital. So what do I mean by that? So for Measure B, we'll be raising $80 million. There's a resolution tonight, which allows me to sell $80 million worth of general obligation bonds. So after that resolution is approved, I will work with our financial advisor to actually sell the bond. The actual sale will happen in April and May. This is the first of three planned sales, so we anticipate at this point that for Measure B, we will split it into three sales. That all depends on how quick or slow the work goes. For Measure Two, or sorry, Measure A2, there's also a resolution to sell $12.5 million of general obligation bonds. It will, the sale will actually occur pretty close to the same time. I'm still working it out with our financial advisor. It could potentially happen on the same day, after Measure B, or the next day. So we're still working that out. That ultimately depends on market conditions, and this will be the final of two planned sales. Next slide, please. So for Measure A2, some of the projects that we're working on, next slide. So happy to announce that we'll be celebrating our groundbreaking for the new NPR at Donaldson Way. That event will occur on March 25th at 9:30 a.m. Next slide. Some of the work that we'll also be doing this summer, so at American Canyon Middle School, we're replacing the track and field. Just a quick detail to point out that this work will likely go into the fall, so it will definitely take longer than just this summer, so there will be some impacts on students and teachers in the fall. We hope to get it done as soon as possible, but these types of jobs do take some time. Next slide. Some of the other projects that are going forward include roofing, HVAC and fire alarm at American Canyon Middle School and HVAC at Canyon Oaks. Next slide. Measure B. So for Measure B, again, very happy to announce that demand far exceeded our spot. So for Measure B, for the Bond Oversight Committee, I think we had a total of 16 applicants for Measure B, so our process of advertising it, putting it up on the website, really worked out exceptionally well. I don't think we've ever had that happen before. So great interest, numerous very qualified applicants, we're very excited about that. So we met as a team to review them. There are some boxes that we have to check in terms of who we can allow on the committee, and so some of those include somebody from a big business organization, a parent guardian, parent guardian who's also active in boosters, somebody from a bona fide taxpayer organization, senior citizen organizations and a member-at-large. And so, we did notify all applicants. We're only required to take seven. If you get too big, the committee gets a little bit large and it's difficult to kind of moderate through. We did add two extras, so we're at nine. That is the biggest of our oversight committees. And so again, the board will take action on improving the list tonight, and we'll schedule our first meeting once we have bond funds. And so we anticipate the first meeting will happen sometime late spring, early summer. Next slide, please. So for Measure B, a reminder of the work that will happen this summer. So roofing, HVAC and paint are the projects that we'll be working on in the summer. There's some projects that are here that will go into the fall that are not listed There's some projects that are here that will go into the fall that are not listed, but the summer work, the main focus on the summer work is getting the HVAC done, getting the roofing done, and the paint done. And so that will occur for Silverado, Brown's Valley, Pueblo Vista, Phillips, Visi, McPherson, Shear, and then also we're starting our solar work. So we're deep into planning, so solar will land at 14 sites. We're in the planning stage right now. We continue to meet weekly with some of the planning. Once we get the final plans done, we'll submit to DSA for approval. And then once we get through that step, the installation is fairly simple. We're using, as you may recall, DSA pre-approved structures. So we're excited about that work, and then to get to a spot to where literally 70% to 80% of our electricity will be solar. So we're very excited about that work. Next slide. Workaround TK continues. So as a reminder, there's two things, and I will say, this could change. It does really depend on the final governor's budget, which I will talk a little bit more in depth. And so TK class side is supposed to go down to 20 to one, or another way of looking at it is you have two adults in the classroom, you have a teacher and an aide for every 10 students. And so it is supposed to go down, but that does depend on funding per statute. And so if something happens with the economy, or the stock market continues to go south like it is right now, that all is kind of, that could potentially be impacted. We're planning for it to happen because the other component is also additional age eligibility. And so we're looking at somewhere between adding between five and seven classrooms. So a lot of significant work going on. And in the background, what we're also trying to do is instead of using old furniture for our TK classrooms, this is the first impression that parents have of our students, and so what we're trying to do is make sure and always put new furniture in those TK classrooms. We can't commit to a remodel of every classroom ahead of time just because of the timing of that work and it needs to happen, but we are committed to buying new furniture for all those classrooms. And then if we have the ability to always put in new carpet and new paint in those spaces and just offer really nice spaces to our youngest students. Next slide. I think that's questions, and so that was just intended to be the bond update. So Kelly Jurgensen was not able to come tonight, so I just took it on. Thank you.
Any questions from trustees, comments? Thank you so much, Mr. Manguala. Oh, Trustee Water.
I am so excited about this, I can't stand it. I'm, I mean, you know, I think that we sort of saw what it would look like when we redid Altahights. And, you know, I expressed myself over and over again about how delighted I was with it, but I just can't let you go away without saying, I am really happy we passed this bond. This is going to make an incredible difference to our children. And I know we talk about little children, little children, you know, and it's really important to put your best foot forward and, you know, make them feel welcome and have an attractive place for them and all that sort of thing. But I did teach high school. I also had exchange students come into my classroom. And when you have a kid from Russia come into your classroom and look around and say, "What is this, Chernobyl High School?", you know that the place needs help. So I feel that we are on the right track, and I'm so delighted, and I want to just thank the community for supporting this again and again and again. This is a great town, you know? So thank you.
Thank you. Very excited to get started on this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manguala. I'll echo Trustee Water. It is exhilarating, to say the least, to think about all of the amazing celebrations that we're going to have moving forward to get our students into safe and modern learning spaces as they deserve.
Thank you.
So thank you for the update.
Sorry? I think I'm up.
Okay. Yes. Oh.
Pretty close.
All right. We're not ready for your presentation yet. Okay, so that brings us to I, approval of the consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll call vote unless discussion of items is requested by a board member. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
A second. Thank you. We have a first by Trustee Hart, a second by Trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda items?
There is no public comment on these items.
Thank you so much. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Marins.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Okay, that brings us to J, Presentations and Discussion Items. J1, Business Services. A, Second Interim, 2024-25 Presentation. Welcome back, Mr. Manguala.
I feel like I was just up here. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to update the board and the community about our budget. As a reminder, school districts are required to adopt a budget and update the budget twice, and so the second budget update is referred to as the second interim. Next slide, please. And so typically, school districts do not focus on federal funds. It is a relatively small portion over their overall budget. But due to some of the statements I would say by President Trump and the elimination, potential elimination of the Department of Education, along with other comments that were focused on K-12 education, I felt that it was really important to really give the board and the community a detailed analysis of our federal funds and the potential impact. With that said, cutting of federal revenues for education will likely take an act of Congress. It would impact all states and could very well be challenged in courts. Next slide. So again, given the large-scale change proposed, we wanted to look at it in detail. And so this detail analysis, we receive funds in terms of the fund level, so there's three funds that we talk about. We have the general fund, which is our largest fund. We have the adult education fund, and then we also have the child nutrition fund. Next slide. And so in terms of our federal fund, we receive about $266 million in non-federal funds. So that's a combination of restricted and unrestricted funds, so about 266 in non-federal funds. And so the vast majority of our funds for Fund One, which is our major operating fund, are non-federal. So about 5% or $12 million are federal funds. Next slide, please. And so when you look at the breakdown, you can see there's a number of resources. And just a reminder, if you think about it, there's the fund, which is the big broad topic, and then when you narrow it down, you narrow it down by resource, which is a more detailed description of the expenditure. And so at the federal level, you can see some, two names in there you probably recognize quite a bit. So you see Title I, which is a very significant amount for a school district, $2.6 million. And then you see special education. So special education is, we use the term an unfunded mandate, and so while we definitely need these federal funds, it does not come close to the needs that we have to meet the needs for our special education students. So the district every year contributes a very large amount, somewhere around $20 million to special education, above and beyond this amount. And so a cut to any of these programs would definitely have an impact on school districts. Next slide. Adult education, so you can see here, adult education, about 91% are non-federal funds. Federal funds are about 9%. So any cut to this, the district does not contribute to the adult education, so, program. So a cut, or I should say, a cut to this program would, I don't want to downplay it, but it would simply impact that program directly. Whereas a cut to the federal funds, let's say, special education, what would happen there is the district would be required to make a larger contribution to make that up. Whereas the adult education funds, a cut there, it would just be reduction in services that were offered. Next slide. Here you can see the breakdown, about $334 million in federal funds. Next slide. So child nutrition, this is very significant here, so there have been some large changes to the food services plan in general. So if you look at it, federal funds, it's about 51% of the overall revenues. However, remember, if there's a cut here, it would be a cut, it's not just to California, it would be a cut to everyone in the nation, right? So all states in the nation. So, you know, whether that's palatable or not, I don't know, but it's, you would think that making cuts to programs for food for the most needy children would not be palatable. The other piece that we have that's kind of unique to California is it used to be, you may recall, about five years ago, when we had this enormous deficit with our food services program, we didn't receive state funds. So we charged students to make up the difference. We were running a deficit, we were contributing enormous dollars to the food services fund. And so there was a change in that, in that program to where we no longer collect money from students for food services, and the state simply makes up the gap, right? And so the way that it's written right now is so you have these federal funds, and then the state, they make up, they make up additional funds, they provide us with additional funds. So if there's a cut there, we could get, see that money taken care of through the state. We're not really sure how that will land, and so again, we'll just have to watch this very closely as we get, as we go to a budget adoption. This is definitely an area, like some of the other federal funds, where all school districts have a level of risk, which is why our reserve is really, really important. Next slide. Again, $5.9 million in revenues. The vast majority, again, is, goes under the school lunch program. You may have read about an article in the last, you know, I'd say 48 hours or so, so that's, that cut that sounded really large, like the cut of a billion dollars. Remember, when we're talking about cuts at the federal level, the divisor is about 50 million, meaning that when we talk about cuts in California, you know, there are about 6 million students in California. So if you take a billion dollars and you divide it by 6 million, that's a big number, right? It's pretty impactful on schools. But if you take a cut of a billion dollars nationwide on a program which is really one-time funds, it was not ongoing funds, and you divide it by 50 million, it's a small impact. So we did receive some of the funds that were referenced in the newspaper article. I want to say it's about $100, $120,000. Those funds are long spent, so there's no real impact on that. So that was more barf than bite in terms of impact on school districts. Next slide. So what do our economic conditions look like? So again, policies at the federal level are causing enormous uncertainty. So I wrote this slide probably about two weeks ago, so I could definitely toss in a couple more adjectives and say enormous uncertainty. There's large-scale reductions of federal employees. It's definitely gotten much larger than anyone anticipated. Even just looking, looking to yesterday's news, it included a cut of potentially 50%, of the Department of Education. So large-scale cuts, lots of policies via executive order, threats of tariffs. It's causing a great deal of uncertainty. And so the worst thing for the stock market is uncertainty. And so you've really seen this kind of develop in the last couple of days, in the last three days, where, you know, it's been a downward trend, you know, there's a little bit of recovery yesterday, another downward trend today. So why is that especially bad for California? So our tax system in California is especially dependent on receiving revenues from taxpayers who are wealthy and mainly get their money from sales of stocks and bonds. And so in California, if the stock market goes down, it will definitely impact future funding in California. So it is something to watch. And so there was already a deficit in the budget from California, but given the outlook right now, it's definitely, looks like it would potentially get worse by the time we go to budget adoption, but we'll just have to wait and see. Nobody really knows until we get there. Next slide. So this slide reflects the labor market, so not a lot of change since we looked at this at First Interim. I think there's a 1/10 of a percent. But I think that the key bullet here, and again, this is almost identical slide to what we spoke about when we talked about First Interim, was that there's, in California, there's been little to no job growth outside of government healthcare. So if you cut government healthcare, what does that mean? That means that you're on your way to recession in California. So just something that you kind of watch for. You know, the private sector has not generated a lot of jobs in California over the last year, so just something to watch for. Again, we don't really know at this point, again, which is why the theme that I'll just keep, you know, going back to, this is why you have a savings account or a reserve in school districts. Next slide. So inflation, inflation has definitely trended in the right direction, but what we're seeing here is we're having drivers for inflation that are mixed, meaning that when you talk about tariffs, tariffs are inflationary. So it does hit the consumer. It's a myth that it's not going to cause costs to go up. If tariffs actually go through, costs will go up for the consumer, depending on where they're focused. But in the background, what you also have going down is the biggest driver of inflation are fuel costs, right? And so when oil costs go down, fuel costs go down. And so price of a barrel oil, it's pretty, I would say, over the last three to four years, it's pretty close to a low, so it's sitting around $60 a barrel, right? So we start to panic when it gets around 100. So oil is going in the right direction, so we're going to get this kind of mixed signal around inflation, which might allow the Federal Reserve to actually cut interest rates, which could help the economy. So it's really a mixed bag right now. Next slide. So this is the slide that we looked at at First Interim. So again, at the state side, they have a problem with a balanced budget. Revenues are slightly above projections. When I made this slide, but again, I would anticipate by the time we actually get the May revise, that there, this will definitely be, look much worse than you see up here. Next slide. So our local budget conditions. So this slide represents our projected increase or decrease in fund balance. And so for the current year, which is our goal, to always be, have a balanced budget in the current year, we do. So we definitely, we have a surplus here, we anticipate having a surplus in the current year. As you get, just as a reminder, as you get further along, when you start to project, for example, into 26, 27, you know, for here in Napa Valley Unified, we definitely, we project on a conservative basis. So in the past, that was not the case. So when I first started, if there was a deficit in front of you, it was much, much worse, and, which is why we had to close schools and we had to make major cuts. And so when I have the opportunity to prepare a budget, I like to always lean into a little bit, you know, assume the expenses are going to be a little bit higher, which has come true, and revenues are a little bit lower. You don't really know until you get there, especially when you project into 26, 27. We have no idea. They tell us what they think the coal is going to be in 26, 27, but you have, you literally have no idea. And you can say, like, I think I know what enrollment's going to be. We hire an expert who tells us what they think enrollment's going to be. You know, we've been really accurate about that, but again, a difference of 2% is that number on the board you see right there. So when you say there's a deficit of $4 million, we have a $220 million budget, so 2% of $200 million is 4% or 4 million. What kind of industry do you get where you make projections within 2%? There aren't any, right? So that's just the nature of school visits, where, you know, again, you look at that number, but you always have to remember to compare it to the size of your budget and, you know, really be tight and understand as a leadership team, like, what are the assumptions in the background? Is this a conservative number, or is it a worst-case number, or a best-case number? Next slide. So in terms of enrollment, you've seen this slide before. I have updated it for the current year. So again, Napa Valley does definitely have declining enrollment. Inner-district transfers have certainly helped out a lot with that and had, which means enrollment from other districts. We have gone down, since I did this slide, we've gone down 50 students. So if you look there, 16,023. So since First Interim, we've gone down by 50 students. It kind of follows a pattern here in Napa, where enrollment tends to build up a little bit until Christmas break, people move away, and then enrollment goes down a little bit. So that's a pretty typical pattern that we're seeing right here. Next slide. So for this slide, what I wanted to do is I wanted to compare the enrollment in American Canyon to the Napa area. So it is, it is a tale of two cities, meaning that enrollment in Napa is declining, but then enrollment in American Canyon is increasing. And so what I also wanted to do is add some details to that and kind of go into the why that's happening. Next slide. And so this slide is a W that you see on here. This is a slide that depicts what enrollment looks like in American Canyon when you strip away people from other districts, meaning once you take away the inner-district transfers. And what this slide shows is that in the town of American Canyon, enrollment's all over the board right now, right? And even has a slight decline. So if you look at the number from 2029, 3977, and you look at 3972, you can see that there's also a decline in the city of American Canyon. So even with the building that's going on in American Canyon, the building can't keep up, at least right now, with the lower birth rate. So lower birth rates, like we've kind of talked about, it's the biggest driver of enrollment in a school district. Building helps, but it doesn't, it can't offset that, that lower birth rate, especially on a permanent basis. It can take care of it for periods of time during times of really heavy building, but if you have a low birth rate, you have a low birth rate, it's really hard to overcome. Next slide. So what this slide shows is inner-district transfers, and so the district has made a large effort to attract students from other districts. I think you've seen the ads on our buses we've had before, driving around Fairfield and Bolejo. We stood up an enrollment center where we have centralized enrollment to make the process a lot easier for families and provide them with support. And you can see the, you know, the data has, has shown that it's definitely worked. So we've gone from 359 students in 2029, 2021, to 579 students in 24, 25. So very significant growth in our inter-district transfers. Next slide. And so then when you look at enrollment in American Canyon with the inter-district transfers, you see this upward trend, right? So, but again, it's not, it's not due to just local students, it's due to the impact of inter-district transfers, it's, it's what's driving that growth. Next slide. So this is another important piece when you, when you talk about enrollment and you talk about building. And so Rob Murray, our demographer, he uses a term, it's called student generation rate. It's a statistical term where they literally look at the houses that are built and they say, okay, there's 100 houses built. If there's 100 houses built, how many students would you anticipate coming out of that 100 homes, right? And so what you see for our historic rate, it's .986, which is pretty close to a 1:1. So if you build 100 homes, you would anticipate that you would get 100 students. It's just no longer the case right here. So what you see right now, and again, this is for low-income housing, you can see at Limo's Point, it's .22, and then you can see at the Cove, it's .15. So another way to look at it, so if you, if you build 100 homes, you're getting less than 25 students. These are, these are all apartments, so we just, we actually just got, thank you for asking, so we just did get the rate, because what we have to do is literally call down there and say, hey, how many homes are open for occupancy? And then what we do is we get the street tables, we compare it to our student information system, and we come up with a count. It's slightly higher, but not much. I think it's .3 for single-family homes, but it's still really, really low.
This is American Canyon?
This is just for American Canyon, yes. Next slide. You've seen this before, so I know, I know the numbers are, are small, you can just kind of, if you just look at the colors, this is a comparison of our projected enrollment versus our current enrollment. You can see we came above projection by 140 students. If you go down the columns with the grade levels, you can see most grade levels are higher than we anticipated. And then you can, and that's true except for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, which came in lower than anticipated. Next slide. So layoffs or reductions in force, and so again, we do not anticipate any large-scale layoffs or reductions in force. This is the same as what we've had every year, where the reductions that we have, they're due to declining enrollment, they're small in nature, or changes in programs. Again, we do not have any large-scale layoffs. We do have some changes a little bit. I think in, in here, one of the things that's a little bit abnormal is we did have a high school qualify for Title I funding. And so when that high school qualifies for Title I funding, we do not receive additional funds for it. So what that means is we just have to shuffle, shuffle the money around from school to school, we eliminate some Title I funding at some schools, we add it to others. And so that means that, again, the size of the pot doesn't change, it just gets split up differently. Next slide. And so one-time money, again, many districts use one-time money to mask structural deficits and added a large number of programs and personnel that must now be cut. We did not do that. We did add some positions like we've spoken about in the past. Again, we do need to make some, you know, small cuts over time as that money disappears, assuming that it, it does disappear. It's, again, it's very small in scale compared to other districts, but it, it's just something that we need to continue to watch for as, as a school district. Unfortunately, due to the revenues and how they work in California, revenues fluctuate a lot in California, right? Since they fluctuate a lot, what the governor usually does is in terms of a relief valve, which is similar to the previous governors, is they give you some money, an ongoing money, but then if they're uncertain about it, they put that balance of what that uncertainty is into one-time funds. So instead of saying, you know, I'll take, for example, learning loss mitigation funds, we receive those funds and, and we're potentially going to receive more of those, but instead, I think most people would prefer to have a larger COLA or something that's more ongoing, but it just doesn't happen because once they give school districts that larger number, it's really hard to make the cuts that need to be made due to the layoff rules. Next slide. So TK, we spoke about this, so TK class size will be reduced from 24 to 20. It's proposed at this point in time, and so this is, I, I use the term problematic, I should, I could probably eliminate the word problematic and just say challenging because we're further along and, and we're definitely on the right path for that, meaning that we're likely going to add six to seven TK classrooms. What we need to do again is just watch this closely and ensure that it happens, but we're preparing for it like it will. We won't know for certain until budget adoption. Next slide. This slide represents, represent a summary of our unrestricted budget. So you can see that our revenues continue to increase. This is a good sign, right? So if you look across the revenue line, whereas there have been years when we've adopted a budget where you see a decrease in revenues due to the size of declining enrollment or the impact of charter schools, right? So at this point, again, we're, we don't know for certain, we'll, we'll know more as we get closer to budget adoption, but at this point, we're anticipating that our revenues will continue to go up. And again, when you have a school district that has declining enrollment, as a reminder, you don't actually see the actual COLA. So for example, for 24, 25, we're anticipated to get a per-student increase of 2.43%, but that, that only holds true if you, if enrollment's steady. So if enrollment goes down, then you're not getting that, that true 2.43%. So that's the challenge you see due to declining enrollment. So and again, we, we anticipate that we'll, that we're going to have a balanced budget this year. And, you know, as we get closer to budget adoption, I would anticipate that we'll likely adopt a, a balanced budget for next year. Again, we look at things closely, we tend to budget on a conservative basis. I anticipate here today that we'll adopt a balanced budget, but, and so I look at this number you see of a potential negative $3.7 million as a worst-case scenario. Next slide. So what are, what are our recommendation next steps? Again, approve a positive certification for second interim. Both certified and classified cuts will need to occur slowly to match natural attrition rates. And so again, this is exact same bullet we've had on every budget update. Cuts to federal funding could lead to additional cuts, so just a little word about that. So, you know, because we have a reserve if these things happen, because remember, federal cuts happen off-cycle. The budget cycle for the federal government is not the same as a state, so we could get these cuts, Congress could pass something that would cut schools, and we, we, we won't know for a little bit until they actually do that. We have time to act. Depending on the size of the cut, we might not be able to sustain that forever, and then we, we would eventually have to make the same adjustments that everybody else does, but it won't push us into insolvency. So there's nothing here in front of us today where I'd say, hey, a federal cut is going to push us into insolvency. That's just not the case, we have a reserve, that's what it's for. Again, while no large-scale cuts are anticipated, we just need to continue to be physically conservative, especially in this kind of, I'll use the term unprecedented time, due to, you know, changes in federal leadership. So with that, I think, next slide is questions? Oh, nope, sorry, one more. So for Measure B in A2, this is a little bit redundant, but I'll just, I'll try and go through it quickly. We are selling our first batch of bonds for Measure B, A2 is the second batch, you're approving the names for the Oversight Committee, can, we're going to continue with onsite, ongoing project planning for the summer. Over the next series of board meetings, you will see additional contracts going to the board for contractors. What we're waiting for right now, the primary driver, I should say, the primary risk to our projects is related to cost for HVAC units. So we know that there's a lot of discussion about tariffs, we don't know what the impact is right now, and I don't have my number for HVAC units, so I don't know that number. So we're just going to have to continue to watch and, and adjust as we go. So there's definitely risks there, there's, it's outside of our control. I think the best way that we've mitigated risk is because you supported me with this idea of moving quickly and getting work done this summer. Instead of using this as a planning summer, I would anticipate, just the way that inflation works, the costs this summer, no matter if there's a tariff or not, are going to be less than the cost next summer. Next slide. And with that, I open up to questions.
Thank you. Trustees, questions, comments? Trustee Jankowicz?
I've been waiting quite some time to make these remarks. I didn't know if I was going to be in a position to make these remarks seven years ago, six years ago, five years ago. And maybe it's in response to the questions that we've been asked over the last seven years, and as you've said, kind of the uncertainty that exists today. So I apologize, I prepared them, I'm better that way. The uncertainty regarding the dismantling of the Department of Education is grounded in financial impact. It distributes billions of federal dollars to colleges and schools and also manages the federal student loan portfolio. The hope is that these duties departments that impact K-12 are parceled out to other agencies. The hope is that any cuts will not have widespread impact, but hope and uncertainty are interchangeable in those two sentences. Assistant Superintendent Monk Wallace pie charts and supporting data showed the percentage of Fed dollars versus state dollars and its potential impact on NVUSD. While the Fed percentages are small, the impact, as he so clearly said, is difficult to assess at this juncture. So what is uncertain? Potential changing funding models. Educational funding is often subject to political and economic shifts leading to uncertainty in resource allocation, and that's tough. So is the governor going to withhold the $1.6 billion from Prop 98 funding? Will there be state revenue shortfalls, or will there be potential federal funding cuts? And for those that are interested, you should read the economic forecast from the Congressional Budget Office. But decision-making in times of uncertainty, when your financial house is not in order, is extremely difficult. So what is certain? That our financial house is in order. And over the last seven years, it has been a tremendous amount of work. We have a healthy reserve that will help protect against funding volatility. There is a tab in the digital version of a local paper listing school closures and consolidation. That list is substantial. NVUSD is in a position to make fiscal decisions that serve students. We are not forced to be reactionary because of the hard work that has been done to date. This administration understood what the impact would be if we did not make decisions that were driven by, how do we provide best outcomes for kids? How do we leverage decision-making to create the most resources for kids? And in doing so, address our declining enrollment environment, pending state shortfalls, and the critical importance of having reserves. I cannot imagine what it is like to manage a fiscal crisis internally while you are managing the potentially, potentially, oh my God, the potentiality, I'm so sorry, of a state or federal funding shift. Shall I ask Hayward, Oakland, Vallejo, Santa Rosa, San Francisco, Sacramento Unified, West Contra Costa Unified, Petaluma, Sonoma, Fairfield, Inglewood, South Monterey, Monterey, West Fresno, Emory, Compton, the list goes on. They are all... I did not, thank you for including. They are all facing structural deficits. We are not. The fiscal stewardship, strategic, conservative, and thoughtful approach to our financial planning has enabled us to have the resources to navigate what comes our way. We, unlike many districts, can make decisions grounded in what is best for students, not crisis reaction to the uncertainty, we can proactively decision-make. Think about that last slide, recommendations and next steps. I mean, really think about that slide. The next steps, bullet points, are a reflection of a district that has made really hard decisions. It is a reflection of excellent financial stewardship from the business office, and it is a reflection of balanced and thoughtful decision-making. This wasn't luck. This was intentional, responsible fiscal management, prioritizing stability, accountability, and effective resource allocation. It is not easy, decisions are not always liked, but we try and do what is best for the big picture. As always, we will assess and manage the operating deficits in year two and three, but to be able to feel certain in a time of uncertainty is a testament to the decisions that have been made over the last seven years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Jankowicz, very well said. Comments or questions from other trustees?
Nothing, I just want to second wholeheartedly what she said. I do remember coming on this board and being, and, you know, the revelations of the financial situation we were in, this was... The only thing, just closing schools is horrible. It's absolutely horrible. And I want people to remember the weeping children in the, in this room, the upset parents, extremely emotional. And we didn't, we didn't go through it because, you know, we wanted to, it was something that made us happy. It was something that was necessary. I kept repeating over and over, we have 2,500 middle school students, we have 5,000 seats, do the math, what am I supposed to do? You know, and they'd say, well, there must be some fat you can cut. Well, come on, you know, fat we can cut, there, you know, we're, you know, frankly, we're mostly, we're mostly people, we're mostly people. And don't close the school. It was, it was unrealistic, we went through with it. We made some enemies, but I think we, I think circumstances have shown that most of them have come around and realized that we did what we did because, you know, something that we, we just sort of thought a day like this was going to come and we really had to be prepared. And, you know, I don't, I don't want to shake my finger at other school districts. Not everybody's as hard-boiled as I am, but it is, when you, when you read the newspapers and you see the, the pushing off of decisions, you know, it, none of this has come as a surprise to us, all of us. I, I have a great deal of compassion for these, for these districts, what they're going through, because we almost went through it, we came this close.
But we didn't.
But we didn't. And, you know, I really want to thank everybody, you know, current, some current board members and board members who have left us, who stepped up and did what had to be done. And this is, this is, I think actually we should be proud of this report. The other thing that's getting to me is just, you know, I'm a retired person, and so I have a healthy interest in, you know, finance and that sort of thing. I just, sometimes I wonder why anybody would want to be a stockbroker, because... Because you just, the most outlandish comment comes out from, you know, someplace, you know, back east, and, and all of a sudden everyone goes insane, and the stock market goes boink, and I just, it's, if it weren't, if it weren't so hair-raising, it would actually be funny, but it's just, it's so volatile and so strange. But we're all sitting here, we're here, and we're, you know, we're going to fight it out, and we're going to stick together, and we're going to get through this, but it's thanks to what went on before.
Hard decisions are hard decisions.
Yeah.
In the long run, sometimes they benefit.
Comments from other trustees?
I guess I, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Monk Wallace, and echo the comments of my colleagues. Thank you for your thoughtful, deep analysis, ongoing conservative analysis, and keeping us in the black in our books, and, and keeping us stable and able to function thoughtfully and strategically instead of in a reactive and panic, place a panic, as I think we all have empathy for the, for the trustees on the boards of those schools that are, that are really floundering right now, because they were not able to see the writing on the wall in time or make the hard decisions. I also just wanted to sort of amplify that when we look at the federal programs that are on the table, you know, these are supplemental dollars coming to our district to, to support the most vulnerable children in our system. And so when we talk about sort of what seems like, well, you'd think that you wouldn't want to cut funding from children that are hungry, and, you know, we sort of like, yeah, wouldn't you think that? That you wouldn't want to cut funding that feeds hungry children, that you wouldn't want to cut the funding that supports low-income students who are struggling with challenges and circumstances that our other students are not. You would think that, that the government would not want to cut the funding that supports the mental health of students who are, you know, dealing with challenges that are, that are neurotypical students are not. You would think that you would not want to cut the funding of our English learners who are, again, you know, learning a language and learning content at the same time. So, you know, we're living in very strange times that don't really, you know, it's sort of Earth One, where we care about humans and their, their well-being, and then Earth Two over there where none of that seems to matter. So I just wanted to elevate that, you know, despite the, the instability at the federal level and, you know, these variables that, I don't know why anyone could be a CBO to tap onto trustee waters, you know, you're dealing with variables that are, that don't solve, and you have to make decisions when you don't have all the information that you need. So to have your, your calm and informed leadership and guidance in these times is really appreciated. And I, I too am grateful and proud for our... And I too am grateful and proud for our stable financial outlook and recognize that it is the result not only of past difficult decisions, but ongoing difficult decisions that are, you know, and that our ethos here as a board, if I may be so bold, is to keep the dollars as close to students and their needs as possible, and that that is always our priority. And we thank you for your guidance and support in doing that and maximizing the impact as we struggle with the tension of available resources in the face of needs that are greater than the resources that are available to us.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, and public comment also.
Yep, you do need public comment. You want to go ahead and announce for that?
Sure.
I do have just a statement I'd like to make for the record.
Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this presentation?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, trustees, for recognizing the work of the Business Division. I really appreciate that. I also appreciate some of the retrospective perspectives because it has been a journey getting to this point of financial stability. And in the spirit of that, I'd also like to just make a comment and, for the record, and say a couple of things. So as many, as a couple of the trustees stated, districts across the region are struggling with financial challenges and massive, massive layoffs, dealing with structural deficits. We feel very grateful here in NVUSD that we made difficult decisions years ago to right-size the district, balance the budget, and create stability for our students and staff amidst challenges like declining enrollment and even a pandemic. This included hard decisions, like the trustee said, like closing schools and ensuring that our staffing and programs match the needs of our district. It was a tricky puzzle to solve. Those difficult decisions have actually allowed us to develop, even expand, and sustain effective and enriching programs for students over time, over the last several years. In addition, we've been able to provide employee compensation increases at a time while neighboring districts found it difficult to do so, while working to improve the working conditions in our schools for our staff to the greatest extent possible. NVUSD is in a strong position because of our shared commitment to students, our schools, and our continuous pursuit of an improvement in excellence. Now, with that being said, you know, I think the headline that I already read in the media was that, you know, we're weighing 34 staff cuts as financial challenges loom. You know, there's financial challenges looming because of the uncertainty that is out there in the universe right now for school systems nationally here and in the state of California. And I just, again, want to put it very simply and reiterate the fact, the point was well-made by trustee Jankowicz, that yes, there is uncertainty out there. I've been asked over the last several years, why do we need to have a substantial reserve in NVUSD? Lot of scrutiny and questions around that. But we are in a very expensive, unaffordable, I think, seventh-most-expensive place to live in the state of California. We will continue to live the impacts of that as the demographics of the Napa Valley change. And so there is constant uncertainty here regionally. And as a school district living in a region with that high degree of uncertainty, I know it's not like it used to be, but that's how it is today. It's not the past. That is our current present. We need to be prepared in order to keep the district solvent. And the shifting in thinking around that was not present back in 2018. So financial challenges looming to me is, those are the external factors, because internally we have positioned ourselves to be able to navigate them by maintaining a substantial reserve. That is what reserves are for, for economic uncertainty. So we have it regionally, and then layered on top of that with the current reality, there is that potential with, you know, the national movement that's currently occurring, and, like you said, the potential loss of federal funds. The districts that are in internal fiscal chaos, who have not put the systems in place to navigate things like declining enrollment and the unwinding of one-time dollars due to the pandemic, and then this additional external force that might hit school districts in California, will be in deep, deep trouble. And so the adjustments that we're making are systems-based adjustments that we have to make gradually in response to what is happening in our region. We do them in small, that's the system that's in place to protect the budget. Small and gradual adjustments along the way in response to the data and our reality. And so I just want to make that clear. The resolutions that are on this evening are to give staff the greatest latitude possible in order to deal with any adjustments that are going to be required based on actuals and projections as the budget comes in from the state and as we navigate this potential national force that might be coming our way that is changing on a week-by-week basis. So it's our job here to protect for all those various variables, to maintain the stability that was not present here in 2018. The district was looming, had looming insolvency, you know, right around the corner. We had a 3% reserve, and that means that we only had about two weeks of payroll in our reserves. We were one decision away from bankruptcy, and I don't think, I know I'm not going to allow that to happen, and I know that there's trustees on the dais that are not going to allow that to happen. So we have to continue to be smart while executing on programs and delivering services to the greatest extent possible. But we are going to have to deal with persisting declining enrollment, and we're going to have to deal with the unwinding of one-time monies because those are going away in 2028. So some decisions will have to be made. Minor adjustments will have to be made over the course of the next three to four years.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Masetti. And then, again, I want to commend the board and the executive leadership team for their support as we kind of had to navigate this. And just a reminder, school closure, cuts to service and stuff, that never has ever saved a school district. It's a temporary thing. What saves a school district and keeps this kind of in this position are the systems that we put in place and the willingness to make small adjustments that you go. It's when you don't put the, you go through all that, you close schools, you make massive reductions, but if you don't learn from that and put systems in place to make sure that it doesn't have to happen again, it just repeats itself over and over again. And so, again, I'm very happy that we made those hard decisions, we put our data systems in place, and that we continue and are willing to look at making small decisions in the face of this really difficult work and not just push that decision down the road because it will ensure our stability and the best programs possible.
Yeah, that's a great point, Assistant Superintendent Monk Wallace, because school districts sometimes do take those decisions. Many of them can take it to the finish line. Those that do don't put the systems in place behind it, and they find themselves still in trouble. So, you know, there's a reason we're here, and it's because we had the long game in mind in really putting those systems in place. So, again, we appreciate your leadership. I know that Jenna Burrows is on the call, and the fiscal team, thank you to everybody in the business office that has to do the hard work of preparing these reports, and while you're also doing budget development for next year. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to K action items. Oh, do you want to do the break early? Okay.
It's late. It's wrong.
Oh, my God. It's wrong. I always thought it was 8:30.
It's 9:35, yeah.
Particular apologies to trustee Gonzalez-Mares. Okay, we are now going to take about a five-minute break. Thank you. Welcome back. Okay, we are now on to K action items. K-1A, General Services. K-1, K-1 General Services. K-1A, Adoption of California School Board Association's Recommended Policy Updates, December 2024.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Do we have public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass, opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-1B, Adoption of Revised Board Bylaw and New Exhibit 9220, Governing Board Elections.
Move to approve. Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Chu. Mr. Michael, is there any public comment online?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-1C, Adoption of Revised Board Policy AR 5141.21, Administering Medication and Monitoring Health Conditions.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there a comment online?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-2, Business Services. K-2A, Resolution 25-28, Inter-Fund Transfer.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, since it's a resolution, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K-2B, Resolution 25-29, Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of General Obligation Bonds of School Facilities Improvement, District Number One.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, this is also a resolution. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we are at K-2C, Resolution 25-30, Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of General Obligation Bonds of School Facilities Improvement, District Number Two.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. May we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Morales?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K-2D, Second Interim 2024-25.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-2E, Master Agreement with Frontline Education.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-2F, Contract with AT&amp;T.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-2G, Purchase of Dell Apex Power Protect Data Backup Service with Advanced Systems Group, LLC.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-2H, Privacy Service Agreement with Site, California IT in Education.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-2I, Authorization to Lease 12 Copy Machines from Rico.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-3, Facility Improvement. K-3A, FID 1.4-25, Contract with Arcana Project Inspection.
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Thank you. Motion passes. K-3B, FID 10.4-25, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Membership Applications for Measure B.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-3C, FID 13.1-25, Purchase of TK Furnishings.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment for this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-3D, FID 17.3-25, Contract with Chotteri and Associates.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-3E, FID 17.4-25, Contract with Miller Pacific.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-3F, FID 18.9-24, contract with Valley Precision Grading.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Okay, motion passes. K-3G, FID 18.157-20, contract with Quality Control Consultants for Silverado Middle School and Browns Valley.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-3H, FID 18.158-20, contract with FIT Environmental.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Thank you. Motion passes. K-3I, FID 19.2-25, contract with Quality Control Consultants for Canyon Oaks and American Canyon Middle School.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-4, human resources. K-4A, resolution 25-26, declaring May 5th to May 9th, 2025 Employee Appreciation Week.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item, Mr. Michaels?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Since this is a resolution, Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. I'm going to take a moment before the next set of resolutions to make, to make a comment on behalf of the board. You know, what we're looking at here, and it's come up already in our, from our union representatives and from our superintendent, talking about these resolutions that represent a reduction in force and the first step in that process. While we are fortunate, and we were talking about our fiscal stability here in the district, meaning that we are looking at a very small list of potential reduction in force, I just want to say, first of all, the irony is not lost on me that these resolutions come directly following the resolution in which we just declared our appreciation for our employees. So I apologize for the sort of bitter irony of the timing of the agenda there for me personally. I just want to say that although the list is small, because we are in a fiscally stable place, each one of these reductions represents an employee who is dedicated and hardworking and brings their heart and mind and energy to our students, to the betterment of their education and their lives. I myself, it's personal for me. I have been the recipient of a pink slip because I worked in a Title I funded special teaching assignment. So I know personally that sort of individual pain that falls, even if you know that it has to do with, you know, budget equations that are beyond you and your individual work for the district. It still hurts. And I just want to say on behalf of the board that the actions that we take here that are necessitated by the instability of the state's budget and the serious instability of our, of our federal government right now and the budget implications that trickle down to the education funding nationally, you know, and the enrollment uncertainty, you know, you heard Assistant Superintendent Anguilla talking about, you know, we do our best guess and we, you know, with enrollment and these deadlines come before these deadlines. So please know that first of all, it is the goal of the, of our organization to keep the cuts as limited as possible. And it is our, our expressed hope to hire back as many possible people as we can, as the resources allow. And most, most of all, and most important to me, as a, as a former educator and now a board president, is that everyone impacted by the resolutions that we are about to pass know that it is not a reflection of your value or of the way we value your work, your dedication. We're grateful for your service, for your dedication to, to our organization and to the students of NVUSD. So with that, I will move on to K-4B, resolution 25-23, human resources classified reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of services.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Is there a public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
And President Reiser, I just, for the record, you know, the majority, you know, based on the natural attrition that's going on in the district and whatnot, those resolutions are going to render very little job loss. So I just want to make that clear. There's, there's a lot of natural attrition and a lot of opportunities, like you said, for individuals to be hired back.
Hired back and potentially reassigned. But yeah, yeah. Thank you for, for that clarifying statement. So we are at resolution 25-23, human resources classified reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of services. Did we get it?
We did.
We already did that, sorry. It's a, okay. So we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Do we have public comment, Mr. Michaels?
We did that.
We did that also?
I interrupted.
I was in a flow. Okay. So, roll call vote, please, Ms. Morales.
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Abstain.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
For, K-4C, resolution 25-24, human resources certificated reduction or discontinuance of particular kinds of services.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Student Board Member Grayden?
Abstain.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
No.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
K-4D, resolution 25-25, human resources non-relection of probationary certificated employees.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Morales?
Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
And K-4E, resolution 25-27, human resources release of temporary certificated employees.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have a public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K-5, instructional services. K-5A, 2024-25, school plan for student achievement addendums.
Move to approve. Second.
The first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5B, new and revised high school course of study adoptions?
Yes, President Reiser, we have Dr. Ready who'd like to just introduce this item to the board before they vote.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. President Reiser, we have two courses to present to you this evening, recommendations. The first one is the second course in the series for Career Technical Education for Digital Photography II. Last year, you approved Digital Photography I. We have students who are completing that course, and this course allows them to complete their two-year pathway in this particular sequence. The next one is a revision to PE Photography I, to update the course to include a movement towards more digital photography and Adobe Photography within that. So those are the two courses this evening.
Thank you.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5C, agreement with the Regents of the University of California, UC Berkeley.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5D, agreement with Sebastian Pridmore.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5E, amendment of Napa County Office of Education on behalf of consortium of Napa County local education agencies.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5F, addendum to the memorandum of understanding with Napa Valley College.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5G, addendum to the memorandum of understanding with Calistoga Joint Unified School District.
Move to approve. Second.
The first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5H, addendum to the memorandum of understanding with St. Helena Unified School District.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-5I, addendum to the memorandum of understanding with the Napa County Office of Education.
Move to approve. Second.
The first from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-6, operational services. K-6A, 2025 transportation plan.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-6B, contract with East Bay.
Move to approve. Second.
First by Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-6C, contract with Coolrite Refrigeration, Inc.
Move to approve. Second.
First from Trustee Chu, second by Trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Trustee Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? Motion passes. K-6D, FMO 15.01.2025, ratification of agreement with NOR Systems International.
Move to approve. Second.